Hello and a very warm welcome to this Preston election debate for 2024, brought to you by the Local Democracy Reporting Service. It's where we put the city council's political leaders on the spot over the big issues facing Preston ahead of polling day this year, which is on Thursday, the 2nd of May. Good opportunity for me to remind you not to forget your voter ID if you're voting in person. Now, in order to be eligible to take part in this debate, a party had to be standing in at least a third of the seats up for grabs this year. And that meant that Labour, the Conservatives and the Liberal Democrats all made the cut. However, there are candidates from the trade unionist and socialist coalition, and also a couple of independent candidates standing in wards across Preston this year. If you would like to find out what they're promising, and indeed all of the political parties, then check out their mini manifestos, which we've compiled into a handy guide for you, and which you can find via a link somewhere within the vicinity of this video. But for now, let me welcome the ruling Labour group leader of Preston City Council, Matthew Brown, Conservative Opposition Group leader Sue Witten, and John Potter, leader of the Liberal Democrat group. Now, we thought we would start as usual by offering each of you 60 seconds to make your pitch uninterrupted to the people of Preston. Before we started recording, we drew to see who would go first, and that honour this year went to Matthew Brown. So Matthew, your 60 seconds, start now.
The law collections are really important. We'd like to put faith in hardworking Labour candidates who deal with the day-to-day issues affecting you, such as tackling fly tipping in the potholes caused by the Conservative County Council. However, Labour is the only party with a vision for the city based on our community well-building principles. If Labour is re-elected to run Preston, we'll finish the once-in-a-generation £120 million job of regenerating our city centre that's created hundreds of local jobs, comprehensively address the cost of living crisis, deliver new council homes and a new publicly owned bus company, launch Preston Digital Cooperative, that will include free wifi for residents in some areas, expand our events programme, reopen Guildhall foyer, deliver new transformative levels of investment in Preston's parks and sports facilities, and support the new Preston youth zone. Preston is doing it for ourselves. Vote Labour on Thursday, May the 2nd, so we can continue this work.
Matthew, thank you. John, whenever you're ready, your 60 seconds are underway.
Prestonians will be going to the polls in May with loads of things to think about, from local issues such as the future of our parks to the state of the roads, but also we've got the general election and the current state of the economy in the background as well. Now, I don't blame anyone for being fed up with politics right now. We have a failing Tory government in Westminster and a Labour-run Preston council wasting your money and charging you more. As Liberal Democrats, we don't accept the inevitable decline in public services. Better is always possible, and we wanted to deliver that here in Preston. We have candidates and community champions in every ward, local teachers, NHS workers, from stay-at-home mums to retired engineers. And why are Lib Dems winning in by-elections across the country? Above everything else, it's the hard work we put into our communities to do right by our residents. On May 2nd, vote for change from the other two, vote Lib Dem.
Thank you, John. Sue, finally to you, your 60 seconds begin now.
I know a lot of people are disillusioned with the government, and I've also called some of the behaviour of our MPs recently. However, people have an opportunity to vote at the next general election very shortly. So I want to give a clear message on 2nd of May, it's not about the government, it's about Preston City Council. It's about local hard-working individuals who want to get the best for our local areas and for Preston. Politics is really hard at times, and representing a political party is difficult. But what makes us want to do this is our sheer determination to get better things for local people and make sure they get access to the services that they need. Times are really tough, prices have continued to rise, and people are genuinely struggling. I always wish I had a magic wand, but I don't. What I can promise you is that every Conservative candidate works hard, is honest, and is a community champion for the area. Please go out and vote and think local on May the 2nd.
Sue, thank you very much indeed, and thanks to each of you for that opening. Now, those of you with long memories might recall that the Preston election debate this time last year opened on the subject of the city's regeneration prospects. And whilst not wanting to make it feel like Groundhog Day all over again, I thought that's where we begin this time round as well. Simply because when there are a lot of long-term projects ongoing, necessarily the years slip by before people can really come to appreciate them and feel the benefits of them, whatever they may be. In that scenario though, is there a risk that Preston starts to feel like it's standing still to a degree? Start with you, Matthew.
Well, I think we've got to look at our track record, and I understand many people will be disappointed with what communities are facing because people have had it tough with austerity and the Conservative-led government as well. But if you look at what the Labour council is doing, we've actually got in the market, so we are delivering things, having to do it ourselves because the previous approaches hadn't worked. So the Anim8 Cinema, £45 million cinema leisure development will be open within 12 months. The Harris Museum, the youth zone, the Mount Dennis House, you know, working with social housing providers and plans to deliver the first council housing in a generation. And obviously, we do have plans. And it's probably going to be linked a lot more to when these developments do open, to a real regeneration of our city centre in terms of culture and creativity. So we're actively trying to promote new concerts, new activity around the city, so people can enjoy that. So if actually look what we are doing, I do think we have a very positive story to tell as well, as I mentioned all the time. We actively try to promote decent working conditions, a real living wage, use local companies. You see, on the Harris Museum, there's been nearly 300 jobs because the Preston-based contractor, Colman, over 50% of the subcontractors have been Preston-based companies with a PR postcode. We're really trying to build that resiliency, and a big part of this is resiliency. It's about fairness, but it's also about resiliency, that nobody's going to save us, you know. We don't get the same levels of investment naturally as Greater Manchester often and London, that isn't going to work. Neither is singing to the tune of actually a government that's cutting us back year after year. So this is about working collaboratively with institutions, local businesses, community to deliver something new and creative. And we think we're doing a pretty good job.
Sue, the reality is you don't deviate from that vision really, do you? In fact, all three of you, in terms of the major projects that Preston is undertaking at the moment, you're all pretty much singing from the same hymn sheet.
Yep, I think that's absolutely true, Paul. We all want the best for Preston. I think that's what we've all three leaders here have got in common, and we all want the best for Preston. But some things, they are moving really slow, some of these projects, and they're taking a while to get going. And we've been a big hit hard really with the Guildhall and the fact, and I know it's not your particular fault, Matthew, that it's got RAC and it's got works to be done, but we do need to get that foyer opened because it was used for the mayor's ball on Saturday evening. So there's no reason why we can't move forward and get that up and running really, really quickly to get some kind of venue back to Preston and then we can move forward. It's just, it seems to be slow because we were talking before about how many hustings we've done, and we're still talking about the same things year after year.
Just to explain for anybody who's forgotten, RAC is the material that was dug crumbling, concrete, and several places have had to be closed for safety reasons, and the Guildhall, or certainly the main theatre in the Guildhall, is one of them. John, that's just been a necessary evil, hasn't it? It's not something you can really pin at the door of the ruling Labour group.
No, no, I wouldn't do that. I want to be fair to the ruling Labour group as well. But you can't walk through Preston city centre without seeing bits where you think, just it looks in decline. I mean, you are absolutely correct for Anim8, for the youth zone, that has had cross-party, universal support. But if you look at our city centre and people come in and say, well, what is the point in coming into the city centre right now? Now, we need to change that. Like most towns and cities, it's not going to be a retail-based offer that's going to save our city. And actually, and we can't avoid the fact, what we need is also a change of the bigger levers of power. We need, you know, whatever happens with the general election, something has got to change to make our towns and cities more able to thrive. I mean, the Lib Dems have already done their big pitch about taking business rates and actually moving that burden away from the tenant and onto the landlord as a way of getting life into some of these streets. And it's going to be those sorts of initiatives that are really going to breathe new life into places like Preston.
In terms of the Guildhall, John, I know at the budget meeting earlier this year, you were looking to the longer-term future of that facility. Is that rather defeatist that you think that the Guildhall in its current form really hasn't got much life left?
You can't get past reality. Buildings have certain lifespans, and the Guildhall at most is going to have a few decades left. That's the nature. Anyone that tells you different doesn't understand the nature of that concrete in the Guildhall. And what we need in Preston, more than anything else, is actually a conference venue. And because the Guildhall is of its time, it's served a purpose, it's had a great life, but we know it is coming near the end of that life at some point. So we need to plan for what's next. And to do that, you have to have an idea, if money suddenly appears, like we've had lots of things recently, like, you know, levelling up funds or whatever else that come in, you have got to have a plan in place. So if the money becomes available or an opportunity presents itself, you can grab it and say, this is what we want for our city.
Matthew, those one-off government funding pots that Labour locally impressed and quite often decries as being insufficient compared to the day-to-day money that you've lost through the years of austerity. They're underpinning much of the regeneration work that you're championing, aren't they? You've got to give the government credit for that.
Well, to a degree they are, but a lot of these projects were started before we had success with Towns Fund levelling up and the rest of it. The Harris is a long-term project that we do have, and obviously we do welcome any funding that was successful to get. And Anim8, again, it was a political choice, we're going to build it and own it ourselves as a city. Then we had more control over, you know, tenants, local businesses, local supply chains, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very much part of a plan, but, you know, we can't get away from the fact, and I said this last year and I'm saying it again, that these two, when they were in government from 2010 to 2015, the Conservatives afterwards, they imposed crippling levels of austerity on Preston, which is primarily a diverse working class community. And there's been less money to do things with. So yes, it is welcome, we do have some capital money, but our revenue budget would have been about £46 million. It's now about £23, £24. So we can't do everything, but I think if you're looking around what we are doing in terms of capital investment, it's £120 million supporting the youth zone, a moundness house, reopening the Guildhall foyer that we're going to see, Anim8 and the Harris, and it's participatory, so a benefit in local companies, local people. But that is, we've not seen those levels of investment in Preston since the late 60s, early 70s. And it will create close to 1,000 jobs, we've got 1,000 jobs. So yes, we are in an envelope of Conservative austerity, but we're doing everything we can. And then obviously, we work with partners, university, obviously, they did that. We work very closely with them on their regeneration. If you look around Frygate, that area is pretty much brilliant. So in difficult circumstances, we're really trying to build the city up. But I mean, obviously, we need a change of government from my perspective later this year with the Labour government. I think that will really help going forward. But, you know, in the current climate, I think we're doing pretty well with what we face.
Just briefly answer Sue's point that certain things are moving quite slowly. Obviously, there's been delays to the Harris and Anim8, slight delays granted, but in terms of the Guildhall and the plan to reopen the Guildhall foyer, can you put a date on that?
Well, we hope to do it this year, but again, it's not anyone's fault that we found RAC. And if we had a government that was supportive, what they would do is make money available to councils to deal with it and deal with it quickly. But we don't. So obviously, we're trying to find a way of dealing with that going forward. But the plan is Guildhall open in the next few months, and then obviously, we need to look at how we can actually open the rest of the building, because obviously there is RAC and that needs to be dealt with going forward in both the, you know, the main hall and the Charter Theatre. And obviously, we could open the foyer, which, you know, is 500-seat venue, and that'll be pretty good going forward. But, you know, we're standing behind the Guildhall, we want it open again. But again, it's not always that easy when we have issues around financing, issues around finding things like RAC in the roof.
Sue, are you committed to the future of the Guildhall in its current guise? Or do you share John's ambition to see a completely new venue for Preston at some point?
We definitely need a venue in Preston, and at the moment Guildhall has got quite a bit of life in it. As we use the foyer and we are using the foyer going forward for the count, then there's no reason why it can't be opened as quickly as possible to get that up and running and have some kind of venue there. I mean, I went to the ground at Clivero last week, you know, it's a small venue, and it brings in loads and loads of business and people, and that's what we need. You know, I'm not asking for a big MEN sort of arena type of thing, but just something that's the centre of Preston. It's really important to people who live in Preston, and then they use all the facilities in Preston itself, the restaurants and the bars, because they make a night of it. And I think that's, we need to get that up and running as soon as possible.
Just staying with you, Sue, in general terms at the moment, do you think Preston has got a good image?
Look, I'm a Preston girl, born and bred, and I love Preston all the time. But there are things that we need to sort out, and unfortunately, it is depressing, some of the areas and the shops shutting down and buildings not coming back into use again, because the, you know, but we've got, and I have to agree with Matthew on this, the new bits at Stony Gate and the station quarter and things that are planned going forward will bring it up and running and a good viability and vitality. City is what we need, but at the moment, it's just a bit slow, is what I would say. And we do need to get that. We've got a fantastic, you know, university, lots and lots of students. But we don't want to just be known as a university city. We want people, older people, more like, you know, 40s, 50s, wanting to come into the city centre. And the way to do that is to get a venue where they can go and, you know, make a whole night of it, because it's not going out just drinking, it's having a meal, it's having a drink, it's going to an event of some sort in the city centre.
John, could I come to you? What do you think Preston's reputation is like at the moment?
I mean, the city's fantastic. It's a great place. I chose to come here and I've chose to stay here, get married and stay in the city. But if, I mean, we asked this question at scrutiny when we had our leisure and culture cabinet member from Labour coming. I said, okay, what's Preston's unique selling point? If you put it on a poster, what is Preston? And he listed off maybe 15 different things, but there's no focus to it. And I think that's the key thing, actually. We need to give ourselves a unique selling point, so we can say, come to it. And whether you want to do it because of the history or the brilliant parks or whatever, then you've got to do it. But I also want to touch base a little bit on what Matthew said before, because he was talking about funding, and he was talking about, you know, how, you know, Tory government funding. We should just point out that Keir Starmer's pledged to not change from Tory funding formula. So you talk about the next Labour government hopefully being able to do something for you. You're going to have to have some serious chats with your leader if you think he's going to fund local government, because he's not saying that at the moment.
We will come on to funding, you'll be all delighted to hear a little bit later on. But Matthew, just to you, on Preston's image at the moment, I mean, one of the items that you funded in your budget was an antisocial behaviour coordinator. So you obviously think there's some kind of issue with that problem, particularly in the city centre. Is that fair?
Yeah, of course there is. Yeah, obviously, we need to do more, and obviously, as part of the Share Prosperity funding too. We've got money for CCTV and obviously, obviously, the youth zone will be a big part in trying to tackle antisocial behaviour. And we are very concerned about that, obviously, but I think if you look at the vision that we do have, it's very clear. You know, this is a Labour council that's delivered a record number of affordable homes last year, the highest out of any in Lancashire. You know, so we're trying to tackle that poverty, which often leads to communities suffering antisocial behaviour as well. But again, you know, we've had a Tory government that's cut the police, and we've lost, you know, I know we're getting a few back now, but we've lost the police numbers that we had previously, and these things do matter. And if you cut services to the bone, these things do matter. So I think what we're trying to do in terms of our image for the city is we're really trying to do things fairly and in terms of equality and make sure that everyone benefits. And I think that's very clear in our manifesto, but it's not easy because you can't often do things on a shoestring. And I think a lot of these things that we're discussing today around empty shops, around Guildhall with RAC and the rest of it, it's a fact of having to do things where we're not properly funded. And I'm probably more confident than John is that a Labour government will address that than the current one.
Maybe those things aren't easy, as you say, but also some of them aren't seen, are they? So in terms of a fairness agenda, that doesn't necessarily translate into whether somebody's walking down Frygate and seeing a lot of people sleeping in shop doorways?
Indeed, yeah. What I do know is that with councillor Khan, who's a cabinet member of the team in terms of tackling homelessness, we're throwing everything at it, we're putting lots of funding into it. The council itself is all grunde directly provided. Council homeless shelter, we obviously work with homeless charities. I mean, the issue as well in Preston is obviously in terms of the train station being there, we do attract often more homeless individuals because it's the administrative centre of Lancashire, but we're trying to do everything we can do there. But if you look at some of the statistics around, you know, deprivation, around child poverty, yes, it's going up, but it's not in no way near similar size authorities within both the region and Lancashire as well. You know, living wage jobs, the employment rate, we are doing a lot better than people think. And I think people can very easily be negative, but what we're doing as a Labour authority is we're doing things very differently. We're taking the lead in terms of public regeneration, doing that with partners. And then we're supporting work in communities, like trying to get the NHS to, you know, recruit people in the highest levels of deprivation. We're launching a digital cooperative soon, where in some areas there'll be free wifi for residents. You know, we have a network of community food hubs, we have a new volunteering centre, where we're actually working communities and trying to divert people away from antisocial behaviour. So to say that we're doing nothing is a little unfair, because we're very clear what we want to do and why we're doing it going forward.
Just let me pick you up on one thing, because this isn't one that we'll come back to, it's just a small point. But the idea of free wifi for some communities, that seems otherworldly when you mention it to people. How is that exactly going to work? How are you going to demarcate who gets free wifi and who doesn't?
Well, the idea behind having a new vehicle, I mean, people are struggling at every level in this economy, whether it's in gig economy jobs, which are insecure, which don't have union representation, whether they're in housing stress. So what we're trying to do is save people money. So the fact we do have so many living wage employers, like the council itself and Community Gateway and others, the fact we do have a record number of affordable homes last year, you know, this is alleviating that as well. And obviously, if people can access free wifi, that can save them money too. And they have energy efficiency measures as well, they can go to one of the food hubs we support if they're struggling in terms of food. All these things do help, as well as trying to create decent well-paid jobs for local people. So on the surface, yes, it does seem a bit abstract, but in terms of digital divide and how that costs people a poverty premium, it's really, really important. So we're doing a lot more of that, getting into communities with these ideas, these Preston model ideas, and bringing about that change.
John, is that kind of thing realistic, do you think, free wifi for some residents?
It sounds a bit pie in the sky. I'd love to see it practically happen. But I mean, I'm a trustee of a local community centre, one of those community hubs Matthew talks about. You know, a lot of this stuff is done by people on the ground, where actually the council involvement is minimal. I mean, they're happy to get it. Usually, the council acts as a middleman to government funding that then goes to these community centres. But it's actually, it's the tremendous volunteers on the ground of these places working massive hours, not getting paid or getting paid absolutely minimal, but are keeping these communities alive. They are the champions of our city. They are the people that have helped during the cost of living crisis, and they are the people who rightly should be getting all the credit and all the praise that we can possibly give to them.
They can't function on praise though, can they? How do you back them practically?
Well, you backed them practically by giving them, I mean, like I said, the community centre timing is involved, is brilliant at doing bids, you know, and that's what they do. And we talked about Preston City Council getting bids. A lot of these community organisations living hand-to-hand in terms of trying to get various bids, whether that's from the National Lottery or whatever else. And what we need is to have a decent network of these, so they can support each other, because not every one of these community centres has someone that can write a bid, that can secure a food kitchen or a kind of an outreach programme to help people in the local community. They need funding to be able to do that, and so it's passing on that experience to as many people and as much knowledge so they can help themselves as well. Because Preston City Council can't do it. Preston City Council's a tiny organisation, it doesn't have this money to be able to do it, it has to leverage it from government.
Sue, from your perspective, the charitable sector or the third sector, however you want to describe it, what could you do to support them in order to help them make more of a difference on the ground than they're already doing?
I'd like to just touch on the digital inclusion bit first, because I have to say, quite often, and I understand, Matthew, that it's certain areas and certain wards, but I have to say, there are a lot of people in the rural areas who do not have, or not even got access to the internet, there's no signal, there's nothing. You know, they've had loads and loads of new homes built and no facilities provided with them, no infrastructure, so it's really difficult. So there's some wards, and there are people struggling. I did census collection a number of years ago, and the amount of people that can't read or write or have problems with reading and writing in the rural areas. So it's, we know there are deprived wards, but there are pockets in all wards that need help. So I do want to mention this. And about the bids, Preston City Council have always been really, really good at writing bids. They've got some fantastic officers who do that, no doubt about it. But equally, John's right about having somebody at his community centre, that there are a number of village halls and community centres now who've done really, really strong bids and managed to tap into funding, and they do tend to share that information between them. So that's where they need to tap in. It's not all the responsibility of Preston City Council. It's the responsibility of communities and the voluntary sector and the third sector, whatever you'd like to call them. All those people are genuinely in the heart of the community, are all working together to get the best for their residents.
Can I just come back, John, really briefly? I mean, obviously, the digital cooperative, yeah, a big part of it is looking at digital literacy. There's going to be free devices that will be recycled to communities that need them, and that will obviously include people in rural areas that might be struggling. But again, it's just, I understand people are cynical, something new people don't like. People struggle with new ideas, don't they, at every level? But we need something like this, because people are struggling in terms of the cost of getting online and also in terms of bringing bills down. If you're online, have a bank account and the rest of it, which many people are in our community, you know, and that's something that needs to be addressed. But, you know, we have this every year from both Sue and John, a bit of a cynicism about the Labour-led policies that we have. I mean, one example we do have is we have worked both at member and officer level. We work as much, in many ways more, with registered social landlords to get affordable housing into our community. We're going to have potentially 318 new affordable properties in Stony Gate. For the people in our community that live in those properties and have the opportunity, what we do matters, and it shouldn't be ridiculed, because these are really important things. Or the 300 people who are working on the Harris, you know, in the local supply chain, that matters to them, the people who get these opportunities. So there's a very clear vision of what we're trying to do. And obviously, we do see the imposition of the worst forms of austerity and free market economics on our communities, which is then enhanced by ethnicity, gender and disability. And we as a Labour-led council want to challenge that and do something about it. So this is why we're coming up with these ideas. And I think the biggest challenge you get in local government and local politics and politics generally often is that people don't like new ideas. But obviously, in Preston Labour, we've got plenty, and these ideas are now embedding pretty well in communities and getting some support in communities as well.
Well, one of those ideas that you've mentioned certainly for the past few years is council housing and the rebirth of council housing in the city. There's been some flesh on the bones, sorry, flesh put on the bones of that this year. But isn't it a bit underwhelming really? You're looking at 20 properties on the former Horrocks Mill site, that site that you were referring to a little earlier. It's not really the vision of a return to full-throated council housing that you've talked about so passionately in previous years, is it?
Well, we have to start somewhere, and obviously, prioritising something like that has been a little difficult for us, especially with all the things that we're doing at this moment in time, because we've got a very big agenda for a council our size. But obviously, the quickest way to do it is acquiring them, these 20 properties. We're looking to provide others by potentially purchasing properties in the market. So those in temporary accommodation, for example, it costs a fortune, the bed and breakfast bill. It makes sense that we actually own properties ourselves to help people who might be suffering temporary homelessness. But obviously, we do want to scale it up, and the Labour government have said quite clearly, there'll be more opportunities for council housing as we go forward. So obviously, this is a direction we're going in. We're hopeful we can go further going forward. And, you know, even Southbury Mullenshawley, I believe, are providing council housing. So we're basically following their lead as well going forward. But, you know, we want to make a big start on this, and we want to see how the planning system as well can deliver new council houses across all developments in Preston going forward. So I understand, it does sound a bit modest, but again, we've been cut back that much, obviously. We want to do this, but we've got to start small and grow upwards going forward.
Just very, very quickly on that one, before I move back to John and Sue. There wasn't really a distinction between social housing and affordable housing in terms of those 20. Can you say for definite there will be social housing, which is the cheaper of those two options rather than affordable?
Again, the money we have, I can't guarantee you that, but that is the aspiration. We do want to do that going forward. Additionally, we are getting some social rented properties from our relationship with registered social providers, which is good, because we do need a lot more of that, especially as the price of renting properties is going up. So I'm quite confident we'll be able to do that, but I can't give a 100% guarantee.
John, could more pressure be put on developers to be delivering more social and affordable homes in Preston, do you think?
Oh, I think there's lots of things wrong with the planning system that need changing. I think lots of people talk about, you know, councils being awkward with developers. But actually, if anyone who's been, knows anything about planning, knows that developers have such an upper hand on councils in terms of their ability to wait things out. in terms of their ability to, to wait things out, uh, just pause their building until the time's right for them. And like, we've passed so many thousands of houses in Preston that have, and developments that have yet to be built because there's no pressure on the actual developers to actually finish what they say they're going to do. So I, you know, I'm not going to be churlish about, um, the plan to start council housing in Preston because actually I agree with it. And actually, and I think that that's the gap in the market that does need to be filled because one of the things that developers can get in, it's their, it's their game. And, and so if they decide not to build in a place, even if they said they will, we have no power to enforce them to do it. So actually the planning laws needing changing and we should do what we can. And you know, there's Lib Dem councils across the country, there's seventy of them. And I know some of them are doing exactly the same thing. So I'm not going to criticise Matthew because I'd be doing the same thing if I was in charge.
Sue, very often you sit in planning committees and hear new estates, certainly or certainly new developments rather within the city centre in particular, where there are no affordable homes whatsoever in spite of that being local planning policy, because the developers are able to argue that it would make their scheme unviable, financially unviable. That can't be right, can it? And isn't that at the government's store to have done something to, to prevent that?
I agree. Uh, I've always said that I've never been afraid to stand up and say, if I think our government gets it wrong, it's a developer-led system. Uh, I know, I know, but a few years ago, there was a white paper on planning, uh, which I spent hours poring over and responding to. I'm sure we all did. And it does need to change. Unfortunately, we are where we are. Uh, and John's right, developers, you know, can sit on land and do whatever. I do support Matthew on his council houses. If you think back, there used to be council houses. My, my family lived in a council house. Uh, and they have the opportunity to buy them. And that was, it was great, that policy, that you had the opportunity to then own that home. But the problem is then new homes weren't built to replace those. And we, and we ran out of homes. So, so we need to do something. And although it's a, you know, a small start, but it's, it's a good start to be honest with you. I'm not, I'm not going to criticise something that I actually think is a good idea. What we do need to make sure though is that when we have affordable homes, especially on all the new estates that are built, that being built in our areas, especially in the rurals, is that the infrastructure's in place and that money for school places is actually given to Lancashire County Council from Preston City Council for education when it's due and not to be just let's go for the affordables and let's put, we just need that balance. We need to make sure we've got everything in place.
Sometimes they do have to make that choice. So don't they between affordable homes and school places? If the developer, again, with, with the power that they've got, is saying you can have one or the other, but not both.
Well, if you've got the affordable homes, you've got to think, where are they going to go to school? I mean, those people in affordable homes may not have access to cars. There's hardly any buses, you know, what are they going to do? And that's what we, we need to make hard decisions at times, but you also need to think long-term, not just short-term about those families that are moving into areas which we really welcome, but need to be able to get to school.
Well, I, I'm always loved to bring other authorities in, into this discussion, but you, you've kind of invited me to on that one. So because there's three potential or promised, I should say, new schools in the North West Preston area, aren't there? Um, part of the five and a half thousand, six thousand homes being developed in that area over a, a twenty-year period. None of them have yet materialised. The Lancashire County Council has not given any indication of, of, you are a member of Lancashire County Council yourself. Um, well, all of you are in fact, um, Lancashire County Council hasn't given any indication of when those schools will come to pass. They've focused instead on expanding existing schools.
It's always really difficult, Paul, because, um, as head teachers and I speak to many head teachers, if they're asked if they want a new school in their area, they don't necessarily want that. They want to expand their own school because each, each child gives them so much money towards their school. So the schools that have expanded, we really, really welcome the primary schools, absolutely. With regard to the secondary school, from what I understand, the, uh, section one O six agreement has been signed now between the developer and L C C, but the issue is bringing it forward and we have no authority, none of us. Preston L C C, you can't make a developer bring that land forward. So we're waiting for that to go to planning committee and all we can do is push and shove and cajole. Uh, but we know that it's needed.
John, just coming back to you, that land, as I understand it, is, is allocated, it's reserved. What do you think has to happen in order to make these schools a reality?
I think they are going to have as much, but it's, it's absolute disgrace. I'm sorry. It's, that land was put aside. They've had it for, we got it for a pound and yet these secondary schools, uh, which take three years from actually being commissioned to actually being open. And we're already getting the pressure now and they still haven't turned up. And I'm sorry, at some point, you know what the critical mass will be? Actually, when people don't move to Preston because there's not the schools and which hurts all of us. We don't get the bill, we don't get the growth in the city. But if I, I mean, I have people on the phone with me as we get their places absolutely in floods of tears because they're having to split their family up to go to different schools. Or they say, oh, you know what? You could travel, you know, two and a half miles to that secondary school. Don't worry about it. Even though their other kid is at a school two and a half miles the other way is absolutely horrendous for those parents. And it's not what we promised. And you, we're going to talk about the, the future of councils. For me, this is as clear evidence you can get that actually a two-tier authority where you have Lancashire County here and Preston there doesn't work. Because now we're getting into a situation where they're both arguing with each other over, okay, are we going to do this with what's left of City Deal or are we going to do that? All the time, this is parents struggling and we don't have the schools that were promised. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Sorry, Paul, can I just comment? I don't understand the argument between the two, the Preston and L C C about City Deal. Cause I don't think that's happening. So I'm not sure about that. And about parents, most, most parents got their first choice. The issue isn't about reception, it's about year two. That's the issue. And it's people who are moving into the area, which we welcome. We welcome our Ukrainian guests, the Afghan community. We've offered a lot, we've actually welcomed these people, but unfortunately they're not managing to get their older children into the, the schools that they want them to do. So I'm not sure that all your facts that you have are correct, but thank you.
Matthew, there's definitely, I tell you what, are you, sorry. Sue missed the briefing on, uh, on City Deal, where actually the argument over ten million pounds of assets that haven't yet been delivered, including the schools. Uh, as current, and that includes the Linear Park, money towards the Harris, all the rest of it that hasn't yet been delivered. And that's what they're currently negotiating about whether we should continue City Deal, despite the fact we're missing out on all those assets.
Could say for people that don't know what City Deal is, it, it's basically a, a, an infrastructure funding pot, isn't it? Um, houses and, and homes and, and jobs in return for, in return for infrastructure or certainly the, the funding to build that infrastructure. Matthew, those three, um, sites in North West Preston were schools could reasonably be expected to have been built already according to the master plan that Preston City Council developed for that area. Should you, as the ruling group, be putting greater pressure to make that happen, whoever that pressure needs to be applied to?
Well, we are and I am because it's equally frustrating for us. I mean, the City Deal has been on pause for nearly two years. There's been a disagreement amongst the parties over various matters. Uh, we negotiated a situation where we think we'll be able to, uh, get some more, an improved position for the Preston City Council in terms of the outstanding things that we have, Linear Park, money for the Harris Museum, uh, money for Animate, which they did probably do through City Deal. Um, but I mean, John raises a very good point actually, and I actually do agree with him on this issue, that, um, the whole way it was sold, and we've got to go back to twenty twelve thirteen, when the City Deal was first signed, obviously a very long time ago. Uh, was that you get the public infrastructure. We've got that to some degree. Yes, we've got the roads, but you'd also get the schools, G P surgeries and the rest of it. And obviously the county is the education authority and it's really frustrating that they did seem to indicate about a year ago that they actually delivered these new schools and they're not. So again, from my political perspective, I do not like it when developers, uh, manage to take all the profit and then communities are left wanting, which is what's happened in this instance. And I'll be doing everything I can to ensure that we actually do get the infrastructure. Cause as well as the parks and the schools, we need the G P surgeries. I believe there has been some expansion or will be in Ingle, which is positive for that area, but it needs to happen at a greater pace. But again, the City Deal is not just the City Council. If it was just us, we'd be doing it differently. If we were unitary, we'd be doing it differently. We've got to work with obviously, um, the Tory County. Obviously we don't have a lot in common with, as you can imagine. Uh, South Wibull have strong views on it as well. And then there's the likes of Homes England. So obviously we've got to do what we can and I will do to improve the situation.
Just to pick up on the, the point Sue was making earlier, just last week, ninety-nine percent of, um, primary school uh, children starting primary school in September were given one of their family's top three choices. So is it just the case that maybe, maybe these schools aren't needed?
Uh, well, I can't see how they cannot be needed with the amount of people that are living in Preston and in those houses, obviously. You do need.
That ninety-nine percent figure is, is across Lancashire, across Lancashire.
It is. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing different stories about children having to go to schools three or four miles from where they might want to. And obviously if, you know, they've got to get on buses and the rest of it, it's not the easiest time for them. So yeah, we're going to do what we can to sort that out. What I would say about City Deal and our housing more generally is we've been pretty tough on ensuring we do get the affordable homes. So the five hundred and ninety new affordable homes in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, second highest out of about forty councils in Lancashire. That is a positive aspect of it, as is good highways. But I think there's another point that you might come on to later. It's not for this election because it's for the county next year. Yes, we've got fantastic new roads around there, but some of the existing roles with the potholes, the Tory County Council aren't dealing with that. It's getting embarrassing. Um.
Well, po- po- potholes, potholes is a whole debate in itself. As you alluded to, yeah, one, one, one for the county elections.
But, uh, but again, we are, we are doing what we can and putting pressure on around that. But what we find is the Tory County Council are very unresponsive to what we say, what we do. They basically just do their own thing. But obviously that's more than I foresee than myself.
You, you, you're not, you're not going to give me an exclusive and say that Preston City Council is going to get involved in, in directly repairing roads, are you?
Not at all.
I think that would be another one to add to the list of things to do.
Well, all of that, whether it be a county council responsibility or a city council responsibility does need funding. And I, I did promise that we, we come on to that as well. Now, depending on exactly when you undertake the borrowing that's needed for the animate scheme, the, the cinema and leisure scheme in the city centre on the, on the site of the former market, that could determine according to the budget that you all passed a couple of months ago, that could determine whether or not Preston City Council has to make one point one million pounds worth of savings on a budget of twenty-four million pounds. That is a significant sum, isn't it, Matthew? Is it not something that you're concerned about at this stage? Are you, are you, are you content to wait until you know one way or the other, whether it's money that you're going to have to find?
Well, we're quite, we're quietly confident that, I mean, we've not made, uh, due to Marty Rollison, our brilliant deputy leader of resources, uh, we, we've not made any cuts for some time really. And again, that does matter in terms of the services we provide to the community. Obviously council offices are often very cautious as well. So we need to do, need to keep uh, the anxiety in mind, but we're confident we can ride it out again. Um, what we will do is obviously make sure that we do borrow at the most favourable terms and at the most favourable period. But again, I just go back to the positivity that we feel about the fact that we're delivering, delivering city centre regeneration in public ownership, building that long-term resilience for the community and the city. You know, we had these conversations twenty-five years ago with Tideborne about how it's going to be. You know, the most amazing project, retail-based development, the rest of it. So our community have waited nearly thirty years for this. Things that we should have done a long time ago, just because of failed approaches. And I understand people are cynical naturally because it's hard. I understand people on social media pretty negative. And I also understand that it's not easy because of, because a lot of the city centres are building side, but give it two years and this city centre will be transformed. You know, we'll have youth zone, a mountainous house. We'll have the Harris Museum open again within twelve months, we think. Animate, it's going to be a very, very different place. And I just think it's short-term, uh, pain for long-term game at this moment in time.
Irrespective of whether you do have to find that one point one million pounds, depending on, on the borrowing level and the borrowing arrangements. You are on the road to running down the reserves to, to the minimum allowed levels, aren't you? I mean, from ten million pounds, sorry, ten million pounds between twenty-three, twenty-four uh, being spent through to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it'll take you down to just one point three million pounds in your general reserve fund and you, you're legally obliged to, to hold one point one million pounds, aren't you? Aren't you in danger of running out of road and that mantra of, of a no cuts budget? It might not be one that, that stands up for very long.
Well, we managed to avoid that so far. Obviously we're going to do everything we can to avoid that. If we have to make savings, we'll make savings. But as labour-led councils, we do not want to impose cuts on our communities across Preston. It's just something we don't want to do. There's been enough of that. So obviously we'll be working to ensure that when we do start the animate, the biggest investment in the city centre for probably fifty years, as I said earlier, that it's done on the most favourable terms because we don't want to do that. But I accept your point, Paul. You know, if it comes to, we're going to have to look at where we do make some savings, but it's something we'll try to avoid for as long as we can because it makes sense when people are struggling with cost of living, with, uh, stresses on services and the rest of it, that we actually don't cut them because people need those services. So we're going to make sure that we do uh, maintain a healthy budget position because we balance a budget every year and we avoid cuts, but if we have to look at them, we will.
You don't think you're running out of the road on this particular track?
I think not, no. Yeah, I mean, there are some internal discussions which I can't reveal at this moment in time, Paul, but you know, we are more and more confident that we're going to do okay.
And just very briefly on this one, before I go back to John and Sue, you, you've had certainly for the past two or three years, a, a contingency list of savings of one point three million pounds. Um, sort of in your, in your back pocket, so to speak, that would, that would obviously cover the one point one million pounds should it, should it come to pass. What is, is on that list? Is there anything you, you're willing to divulge that's on that list? Because it's been waved around as, as a potential saviour if it's needed for a good few years now, but nobody really knows what it amounts to.
Well, I mean, there's things like the community engagement budget potentially, which could be looked at, but again, it's something we just don't want to touch. You know, there's things like, um, events that we could look at as well, you know, I can't remember precisely what's on the list. I've got that much going on at the moment. I do apologise for that, but, uh, those kind of things, the things that aren't statutory services, potentially we could cut, but we don't want to do it. And we're doing a lot more. Obviously we have the shared prosperity fund, which came from, uh, uh, the, the so-called benefits of leaving, leaving the European Union. And we're spending a lot more at this moment in time. So, and we'd be good at getting external funding from other sources, like we've seen with the Harris, you know, there's been some foundation money as well for community wealth building we've got. So we're trying to make sure we maximise the money going into our communities as much as possible.
John, just coming to you, you said at the budget that you could have made a bigger deal of the finances, but you were content to to sit back and wait and see as well. Are you really performing that scrutiny role in terms of what the, the ruling group are doing? If you, if, if you're willing to to give them a buy in that, in that respect?
Oh, I'm definitely not giving them a buy. Let, let's just cut out some of the, some of the giant here. So Mark, uh, sorry, Mark. Matthew said, oh, we've got a balanced budget. Let's, let's go. A balanced budget in his terms means not yet going bust. We are still losing nearly two million pounds a year. We're just chewing up through savings. That's what we're doing. But the, the role of scrutiny, and me and Sue are both on scrutiny, was that when this came to pass, because the, the situation with interest rates and the amount of borrowing we're going to have to do is going to change dramatically, hopefully for the better by the end of the year, we said absolutely categorically, by December, we will know far more how that, because you've got to service all that debt, all these things that we want to do. We, we, all of us want the city centre to improve. But if you're going to borrow money, which the council is going to do, you want to know what level of debt that's going to put on it. Cause it's like anything, if you mortgage anything you've got or you put payments on a car, you have to pay them back. And we need to know our interest rates and our risk so we can assess that. And, and we were told by officers, look, by December, we will know exactly what that risk is to far better than we do right now, having had the ups and downs of interest rates and everything else that we've had over recent years. So this is really, really cruel. And it is, and again, I'm going to go back to my point. I'm not sure I see a future for councils the size of Preston. I just don't think they're big enough to cope going forward. I think county council's too big to be efficient and Preston's too small to be punching where we want to. That's why I believe in reorganisation where we can have a proper unitary authority moving forward, which has the power to do these things. But I know, again, Lib Dem leaders of councils, look at some of the ones we had to do like Somerset, which are making absolutely horrendous cuts that nobody wants to make at all, regardless of any political colour. But councils at the moment are not financially stable and we've got to address that fact that the future of local government is genuinely at risk.
Sue, what would it be? You've, you've taken a si- a similar position unless I'm mischaracterising it to, to John, a, a wait and see approach. But wouldn't it be too late by December? Because the, the borrowing level, wha- whatever it is, it's just going to be something you're going to have to swallow, isn't it? Because the, the projects have been, you know, the projects are being built. It's not like the blood can be pulled.
I think we took a watching brief both, uh, from advice from officers because we, we didn't want to be seen doing our budgets. Uh, to be like spending money on things that we probably wouldn't have the money for. So we took a very sensible approach. But the only reason, Matthew, that you've not done any cuts is because basically we, we're running with so many vacancies at Preston City Council, that you didn't need to do any cuts as such in that, in that department. And obviously we're now going to have to wait and see what happens with the interest rates. We're all looking at that they'll drop. Yeah. I know you're also looking at if there's a labour. Yeah, I know you're also looking at if there's a Labour government, the magic money tree will come along, which isn't at all guaranteed. So at the moment, it's just a watching brief, because we, we do, we all are agreed, we want Preston to be a thriving city. But, you know, the borrowing is going to cost a lot of money. Sometimes though, it's like with the Guildhall, it's no good just saying, we're not going to get rid of the Guildhall, we're going to hold on to it. Sometimes a third party might be better running for Guildhall and, and trying to do everything ourselves, because that is going to cost a hell of a lot of money, uh, to run. And, and the money isn't there, and, uh, my fear is you're stretching yourself too thinly on all these schemes, and they're all going to come at the same time, and you need a hell of a lot of money to do that.
Just briefly, Sue, do you think that the big picture for Preston is going to end up costing the city on a, on a day-to-day basis? So the projects like Animate and, and the Harris, with, there was also talking in the budget of, of potential overspends that, that may be brought up in, in the future, revealed in the future on the Harris. Do you think those big flagship projects are going to end up damaging the day-to-day budgets and harming the services that can be provided?
I should imagine they will do, to be honest with you, but none of us have got a crystal ball at the moment. But we all we know that we see the economy how it is, and there's, the interest rates aren't falling as quickly as we would like. Uh, things are costing more, you just need to look at the cost of the materials for all the schemes that are happening at the moment. They're just going through the roof, you know, literally going through the roof. And those contingencies that all of us sensibly put into our budgets to cover any, any schemes, those contingencies have been blown away because of the, the world climate and the, having access to the materials and work and everything else. So we're just going to have to see now, we all wanted Animate to go ahead, we all agreed, and it will go ahead, but it will come at a cost.
Just quickly, Matthew, same question to you really, what, what kind of a cost do you think Animate will come at, if any? Or can, can you, can you only see the benefits?
Well, not naive enough to know there isn't a risk, there's always a risk, but I think there's a bigger risk not to do anything. I mean, I'm confident from the internal discussions that I have, which, uh, I can't really reveal that, uh, it will be manageable in terms of finances, it'll be a great scheme. But I think we, uh, I mean, we talk about a potential Labour government. Obviously, some of the things in our manifesto, and one of the reasons why I think our communities don't bother turning out in elections is just how local government has not been, not only been cut to the bone in terms of resources, but in terms of powers. So, you know, I've had conversations, I've had other local leaders with the Shadow Secretary of State for Transport, Louise Hague, about how he can potentially get the council to deliver a bus company again, remember that? Seventies, eighties, nineties, you'd actually generally get, get on a bus that was run by the local council, it'd be cheap. It could tackle net zero, and wanted to do that. And obviously, council allows it as well, new opportunities there. So I think there's a big issue, and I think this also goes to the devolution debate as well, Paul, about the fact that we're really disempowered in this country compared to other European countries. And that's a real issue, our devolution deal is really poor. But even those are the much better ones that we obviously have in Greater Manchester, Merseyside and the rest. They're still not as good as we get in other European countries. So I think the democracy that we should have locally and regionally is a big question, Mark, that we need to look at. And obviously, I'll be pushing for a strong devolution deal as soon as we get a new Labour government.
That, that devolution deal, just for people who don't follow these things as closely as we're all obliged to, did come to pass late last year, so Lancashire does now have the devolution deal, it's not, not been finally signed yet, but still going through the motions, but there, there is a, a deal there on the table after, after many, many years of, of trying. Now, the Conservative-controlled Lancashire County Council argues that that is worth something in itself, because it's the first step on the road to greater powers for Lancashire. And you, you will get the powers that, that come via this initial deal, and then you'll be able to acquire more. Why is that not enough for you at this stage?
It's dreadful, it's absolutely atrocious. I mean, compared to what, say, Andy Burnham.
It's something, isn't it, it's something though, it's, it's, it's more than you had this time last year.
Um, if you actually look at what's going to happen within it, potentially our 5.4 million shared prosperity money will go back to this, uh, new combined authority, so we'd actually lose more than what we actually gain. So that is a real anxiety for us, because we mentioned some, some of the stuff we're doing in terms of shared prosperity, uh, skills, the digital inclusion work, support for community organisations, CCTV, it's coming from that part. And potentially, it could then go back to the combined authority. And we, who are closest to the ground as district authorities, won't have a say on how it's been delivered, so.
That's a Lancashire-wide combined authority, again, just for people.
It is, it, it, it's, it's a dreadful deal, I'm really sorry, Sue, it's, it's an atrocious deal. It delivers nothing for the people of Preston and Lancashire, and the lack of ambition within it is frustrating. And I've got to say it how it is, because I'm obviously in these, or have been in these conversations with local leaders. Even things like promoting decent work, which was part of original discussions, like decent living wage jobs, mental health in the workplace, trying to get Lancashire employers to do that, access to trade unions, trade union recognition, we could be doing things like that, but we're not. It's really, really frustrating, uh, that we're getting on with this, to be honest, but that's just the way we are at the moment.
The county council, for their part, have, have said that they've actually tweaked the deal to reassure the districts like Preston, that you'll, you'll still have a say in this shared prosperity money, which you were talking about, at which Preston gets five and a half billion pounds, almost.
Well, I, I, I'm afraid I don't trust them, uh, if I'm honest about it, because if you look at the strategy they've imposed on Preston, and obviously we'll have this debate in the next tw- in 12 months' time with the county elections. Uh, the youth zone, that was something the county was going to deliver, they withdrew from that, Lancashire 2025. You know, there's been many things, uh, that they could have done, but they've actually left us to do. And obviously, in terms of funding and resources, they've got a lot more of it really. So, you know, I'm very cynical that we can actually get anything from the county council going forward. But obviously, in Preston with the city council, we'll work with them as positively as we can do in this environment, but also work with other partners and do stuff ourselves, really, that's the only way forward.
Well, just briefly, Matthew, um, you would like to see the end of Lancashire County Council, wouldn't you? But if, if that came to pass, it would also be the end of Preston City Council, because you wouldn't be a standalone authority on your own. You, you would have to merge to cover a wider area, say, Chorley, South River, potentially West Lancashire.
Well, my own view on that is, I do think we do need a unitary council, but I do think, you know, if you look at some of the ma- the councils in Greater Manchester with footprints of, say, 250, 280,000, that seems a, uh, a more sensible scale than what we have at the moment with what appears to be regional government, i.e. councils become 400, 500,000, I think that is taking away local democracy. But I'd be open to a restructuring in terms of moving forward with a, a new council where we can actually take charge of our own destiny. But I'd like to see it on a much fuller, smaller footprint, because, I mean, Salford Council, for example, I think the residents 270, 280,000, something that size, I think would be sensible.
John, you'd also quite like to see the current system swept away, wouldn't you? But what would you say to people who are actually quite comfortable with the fact that they've got a very local council at a Preston level, not even a central Lancashire wide level, that they feel, you know, can deliver for them more effectively?
But the problem with that is that the vast majority of the really important stuff go, is in the county, you know, like, let, let's not, let's not beat around the bush, the Preston City Council does really important stuff, but the vast majority is county. You know, you're thinking about social care, roads, schools, you know, all this sort of public health, that's all county. That's where the lion's share of your council tax goes, that's the big ticket. The problem is Lancashire County Council is too fat, it's huge, it doesn't, it's not efficient enough to work. And so actually, we need to think, we need, uh, like, I'm, I'm in total agreement with Matthew about the size, and they're the same size as what we would, would recommend and what came up a few years ago. And I think to get rid of that, to, to solve the issue about local representation, you know, both me and Sue are involved in parish councils. I would see a lot more localised councils coming like that, to be able to do the, the smaller scale kind of bits. And also, it's how you structure your council. There are councils that have different area committees that mean that, say, every single councillor within that area has to be on planning to give it a sort of more localised feel. There are millions of ways around it, that is a better way than what we've currently got right now.
Sue, is it fair to say that the devolution deal isn't particularly ambitious, that the Conservative-controlled County Council, of which you're, you're a member of the, of the ruling group there, is, is it fair to say that it's not been a particularly successful deal?
Uh, no, I don't agree, I think it was a very difficult to get, uh, leaders around the table and come to some kind of consensus. I think it's a start, it would have been great if it was more, but it's a start. But the elected mayor wasn't in, on the cards, on the table. So basically, it's a deal without an elected mayor, uh, which meant that the funding was less. But, I mean, Andy Burnham, even though he was elected mayor, they all started off somewhere. And what this promises to open up more dialogue with government, whichever government that may be, and more access to funding. With regard to the prosperity fund, that, the only difference, it used to be passported through LCC to districts. Uh, and that's just going back to that, so I don't think it's not being able to trust us, Matthew. I think there's no issue with that money coming through, because that's like, a bit like getting the grants from government, it has to go through. Yes, it was badly let down about the youth zone, I agree with that, I, I'm sorry that that changed. Uh, and that you've had to make your own youth zone, and Foxton are also doing a youth zone as well. So are plenty of youth zones in Preston going forward. But, I mean, the 20 million is, is a start, and also, the county council have agreed that districts have a voice around the table. And I do actually believe you will have a voice around the table. The levelling up legislation doesn't allow you to have a vote, that's, that's the legislation, but you will have a voice around the table.
It, it does allow you, I don't want to go down this, this particular rabbit hole, but there is a local option, isn't there, to, to allow district councils a vote? If the three upper-tier authorities, the former combined authority, wanted to go down that particular route.
But they haven't, the, the agreement that was done between Blackburn and Blackpool, and I'm not, I've, I've not been involved in that actual, um, agreement at the end, and Matthew probably knows more about it than I do, to be honest with you, because he was one of the leaders around the table. So, I mean, it's, we are where we are, uh, and we could spend ages talking about, well, it would have been better if that. But I know a few years ago, there was no way, Chorley and South River did not want to join with Preston, that was one of the main issues. And West Lancashire didn't want to join with any of us, let's get that right, they feel more akin to Sefton. So there's no way were we going to ever get that, and we would have just spent years carrying on and on and on about the same debate.
Well, you know, I like to throw a bit of a quick curveball question in at the end, a bit of a, a rapid-fire one. And Sue, you might have a slightly unfair advantage this year, because it's actually something that you pledged in your, your budget amendment this year, which was to go for, for four-yearly council elections, rather than having annual or certainly three out of every four-year elections in Preston. You'd rather that the public just went to the polls pretty much with the same regularity as they do for a general election? Just sell that, that particular idea, and as long as you don't suggest that it's anything to do with avoiding having to do this debate every year?
Oh, absolutely, that was my first reason, actually, that came in my head, no, it wasn't. No, I think it's about the money, uh, and about, you know, it saves quite a lot of money by us going to four-year elections, a lot of other people do it. And I was quite surprised, actually, when we had the boundary changes, that they weren't suggested, because it is a big ask. It's a big ask for the officers, it's a big ask for Preston to do every single year, except for the fourth year when it's county. So I think, I think it will make sense going forward.
Matthew, is there cross-party consensus from your point of view on that? Or would you rather be out campaigning three years in four?
Well, it keeps us on our toes and we all lose a bit of weight as well at this time of year, so, uh, it's not a bad thing, to be honest. Uh, no, I do think the, the main issue is not when we have, whether we have them every year, every four years. I think it's local government being properly resourced and properly empowered. The turnout in the sixties and seventies for council elections, sometimes 45, 50%, obviously a lot lower now. But that's because the local government had more power and did more things, and it was more relevant to people's lives. And I think that's, the, I think that's the issue, rather than having it every four years or three years out of four, as we have at this moment in time.
John, just finally to you, your preference?
Um, my idea, I quite like the one every two years. I think, you know, it's a weird kind of way, when, when councils do it, where they split them up by two, there's not many that do it, but I quite like that. But I certainly think elections every year locally is tough-going, it's tough-going for the public to understand exactly why they have elections every year. And, uh, I, and I wouldn't mind going to four-yearly elections, just so I might have, you know, uh, en- enjoy my birthday once in a while in April, instead of thinking about postal votes landing.
Well, that is all we've got time for, for another year. It just remains for me to say, thank you very much indeed to John Potter, Sue Witten and Matthew Brown for joining me. Polling day, as I mentioned at the start, is of course on the 2nd of May. And if you're voting by post, don't forget your ballot has to be back in time for election day. Either way, don't forget to vote, will you? Otherwise, you've just wasted an hour of your life, really, haven't you?
Am I really saying that?
Thanks very much indeed for watching, bye-bye.